The June 12, 2013, meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission will now come to order. Madam Secretary, please note that all members are in attendance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have the introduction of the staff members who work with us, starting with our secretary.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Lindsey Manda, Legal Counsel.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Michael Petty, for this meeting, Parish Planner.
Ben Moran, Parish Planner.
Tim Ward, Engineering.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Laverne Boujwa, Billing Official.
And I may mention, we'll, in a sense, bid farewell to Michael Petty. He got a promotion and will no longer be working on a regular basis with us. We appreciate all the help that you've given us, Michael. Agenda item number five, Chairman's Comments. And for the benefit of the people in the audience, this is the Ascension Parish Planning and Zoning Commission. According to the ordinance under which we run, we actually are required to have two separate meetings every month, a Planning Commission meeting and a zoning commission meeting. And that's by ordinance. We can't combine them into one meeting. And it just so happens tonight, we have to have a third meeting. There is a joint Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, even though the members of the Planning Commission and the members of the Zoning Commission are the same people. By ordinance, we have to do that to address a particular issue there. So we will unfortunately have three meetings tonight. We'll try to do them as expeditiously as possible, but that is the reason for the three meetings. The first meeting will be the meeting of the Planning Commission. Item number six is public comment. And this is an item that we have for items that aren't on the agenda. If people would like to speak something to do with the Planning Commission, our agenda, but for items that are not, that do not have a public hearing, then this is the opportunity to speak. Do we have anyone that's put in a court as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Item, agenda item number seven is approval or denial of the minutes of the May 8, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
So move.
Mr. Chivisi moves.
Second.
Mr. Nezo, seconds. Any objection? Okay, the minutes stand approved. Item number eight, the consent agenda is just one item. It's an affidavit of mortgage declaration. The Henry Bro property lots A1, B1, and A1C1. This was a simple division. And Mr. Compton, if you could enlighten us as to why this is... Oh, Michael?
So to explain this item, if you recall from a few months back, we put through ordinance the affidavit of mortgage declaration. And in that affidavit, when an applicant submits a property for division, they're required to submit an affidavit stating whether or not they have a mortgage or they do not have a mortgage. In the case where they do not have a mortgage, it's business as usual. The process had no change. If the property had a mortgage, however, we're required to notify that lending institution to let them know that the applicant is planning to subdivide their property. In that situation, we give the lending institution a date to submit a hard copy letter to our office stating they have no objection. And also in that letter, we list the next Planning Commission meeting where a public hearing will be given. And we indicate that if they do not submit a letter, they can appear at the public hearing. And then also, it's stipulated that if they do not submit a letter and show up to the public hearing, that we take that as they have no objection and we will list the item as a consent agenda item. And if no one appears, then it gets passed through consent agenda and is approved without having to hear from the lending institution.
So this does not require a public hearing?
The only requirement is to see if someone from the lending institution is here to state whether or not they have an objection or no objection to the division.
And the lending institution is Whitney?
Whitney Bank.
Okay. Is there anyone from Whitney Bank here concerning this agenda item? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to approve that consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Mr. Callender moves. Mr. Bishop seconds. Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number nine is a public hearing to approve or deny the following family partitions. A Gerald Paul Babbin Jr., Gladys Vilar Babbin, lots A1, 1A1, and 1A2, Land Source Incorporated. Could the petitioner come forward?
He's not here.
Okay.
His daughter's a representative.
Okay. Okay, what we have is information that we received. The staff has recommended approval of this family partition with no concerns?
The plat is satisfied all requirements and met all comments.
Okay.
So at this point, it meets everything to be approved.
Okay. It does require a public hearing. I will, barring any objection from commissioners, open a public hearing at this time. We have any comment cards? No. Then I will close the public hearing, entertain a motion to accept.
So move.
Mr. Ori moves. Mr. Callender seconds. Any objection? Okay, the motion carries. B is the Howard K. Moore Estate, lots B4A, B4B, B4C, B4D, McLennan Associates. Is the petitioner here?
Ellen Jackson with McLennan Associates, representing this property for Roxanne Semino. All the comments have been addressed, and we're asking for your approval.
Okay. And stamp has recommended approval? Any questions of commissioners?
So move.
Well, let's open the public hearing. Anyone, any cards? Okay, I will then close the public hearing.
Move.
Mr. Bishop moves that we approve.
That's true.
Second by Mr. Callender. Any objections? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to... 9C has been deleted by the petitioner, the Smiley Estate, so that is off the agenda. Item 9D is the Levi Sturmer Property, lots S1 and S2, Quality Engineering and Surveying LLC.
My name is Derek Murphy with Quality Engineering and Surveying, representing the Levi Sturmer Property. This was a family partition that has, all comments have been addressed, and we ask tonight for your approval.
Okay. And I see that the stamp has recommended approval, no problems?
Yeah, the plat is, all comments have been satisfied, and the plat meets all requirements.
Okay. All right, well, I will open a public hearing. Do we have any cards on this one? Stacy? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. Any questions? Any comments?
Move for approval.
Mr. Chivisi moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nezo. Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to agenda item number 10, public hearing to approve or deny the following final subdivision plats. The first one, A, is Eagles Landing subdivision, first filing, lots 1 through 96. This petitioner is Baton Rouge Land Surveying.
Mr. Commissioner, I need to, I'd like to recuse myself from this agenda item.
Okay, please note that Mr. Ori has recused himself from the meeting for this agenda item. Gentlemen?
Thank you. I'm Billy Aguilar, the contractor. This is Landon, and this is Mark Kessler with Ford and Devote Engineering Company. We ask your approval based on the following staff comments. I think all the final plat comments have been satisfied by the staff. There are a few punch list items that are still outstanding. Everything in the first filing is complete, except the turn lane, which we've been waiting on a permit for one year to get, and it will be completed by the end of the next week. There's some items regarding a fence around the sewer treatment plant. Energy has ran all electricity in the subdivision, except the underground electricity to the sewer treatment plant and to a couple of wet wells. And we ask that we be allowed to let energy run underground electricity before we foot the fences around those three particular items. And then item number four, we talked to Ricky about this, that there was condition of a traffic light put at the corner of Joseph area on Highway 42, which was really based on a 212 lot development, which is including the third filing. And me and Ricky talked about it earlier, if we can stipulate that item number four be negotiated in the third filing construction plans, we'd be more than happy to take care of it at that time.
So this is first filing?
This is first filing, right.
Do you anticipate when that third filing will be?
The second, third filing plans are fixing to be submitted here in the next couple of weeks.
Correct.
Yeah, we're talking about a year down the road before that's finished.
Okay.
But if you look at the DOTD traffic study, it was conditioned on a 212 lot subdivision, which is the total complete subdivision. And it was originally broke down into three separate filings. The first filing is 100 and...
It's 96 lots.
96 lots. So the traffic light really wasn't required at Joseph area until the whole subdivision was completed.
Right. This is the same place where the turn lane was?
No, this is, the turn lane is separate from this. The turn lane is whole, the...
A different location?
Joseph area road, this is at Joseph area on Highway 42, which is not in subdivision at all.
Okay.
As far as the staff's comments, I will need to amend one item on the staff comments, and I apologize for the omission of this. But the final plat, we discussed with the surveyor, Todd Harris, that the common area tracks at the entrances, due to their irregular shape and lack of descriptive boundaries, there would need to be a table added to the final plat before it's signed that would describe those parcels of land by their bearings and distances in order to, you know, remove them from what was the public right of way that would be acquired through the public streets. And so that was previously talked about, however, it did not make the comment sheet. In, as far as the punch list items, I think Tim Ward can talk about those maybe in a few minutes. The comments on the preliminary plat have been discussed, and a revised preliminary plat is in process to be received. In regard to item number four, the, this particular item was spelled out in the original preliminary plat that was approved in 2007. At that point in time, a traffic study was a part of that preliminary plat approval, and there was no determination as to whether or not the traffic light had to be installed at any particular phase. Matter of fact, it was worded that it would be installed in conjunction with the development, which is the staff's recommendation or interpretation of that, that it should be installed at the time that the first filing is done. However, this project laid dormant for a period of time, and when the project kind of got back up and started, a new traffic study was required by DOTD. That traffic study was completed in 2012. However, the parish never reviewed it, was never given a copy of it until two days ago. In that traffic study, it stipulates that the traffic light is warranted at the end, with the third filing. However, the previous Planning Commission that approved this in 2007 did not have that traffic study, and that it was not defined in the traffic study that they approved it under. It's my interpretation that if they want to use the new traffic study, then they would need to come back before the commission with a new preliminary plat and the new traffic study to stipulate that the traffic light should be installed with the third filing. However, if we use what the previous commission approved and the stipulations based upon that preliminary plat, then the traffic light should be funded within this first filing. However, and there's a caveat to that, the traffic light is not warranted in effect as the traffic light itself. DOTD has intentions to create a roundabout at that intersection. So that's why it's listed as the receipt of funding, not actually building a traffic light.
And when you say funded, that's 150 to $200,000, and that funding goes to DOTD?
And that, that's a part of the negotiation. So when we discussed with DOTD the issue of the traffic light funding requirement as a part of the 2007 preliminary plat approval, DOTD has since decided that that intersection needs more than a signal. It's, when we talked to DOTD about this situation and the issue of the funding of the traffic light, DOTD suggested that the parish retain the funding. And if the parish uses this funding, which would be the equivalent of the design of that roundabout, then once the parish pays for a roundabout design, DOTD would acquire a funding source, and we could actually get a roundabout built in the immediate future rather than waiting until this project gets on DOTD's schedule to build sometime in the long-term future. So I guess that's the reason why, you know, according to what the previous commission approved via the preliminary plat, it does not spell out what filing. It says in conjunction with the development. And it's our interpretation that means with the first filing. And if we had the funding now, we could actually improve that intersection to what the future, you know, improvement would be much sooner than if we wait around on DOTD to find the money and the time to design the intersection.
So the end result would be a roundabout as opposed to a traffic signal?
As opposed to what is now just a stop sign, which what in 2007 was meant to be a traffic signal.
Okay. And Mr. Aguilar, your response to that?
Yes, sir. And like you said, that was not a requirement of the latest DOTD traffic study that was presented. They wanted an updated study. They wouldn't let the permit, the original permit continue. So they wanted a new traffic study, which we did. And in that new traffic study, they made us put a right in, right out. They will not let us go out of the subdivision and turn left on the Highway 42. You can only turn right to get out of the subdivision, which is some additional costs we have there. And they made us do a right and left turn lane going out to Joseph area, which is an additional cost to the developer also. The original intent of this back, and this goes back to '07, '08, and '09, when this thing was first started, the original, at that time, the estimated cost of the traffic light was $75,000. To ask the developer to pay for a roundabout, $150,000 to $200,000, I'm saying is not just at this time. And I'm asking us to please let us negotiate, negotiate that one with the construction plans in the second and third filing, and let us go on now. But this thing's been dormant since '07. Please let the developer go ahead and start building some houses now. We will negotiate with them in good faith in the second and third filing for a traffic light or roundabout, whatever needs to be done at Joseph area. But the DOTD traffic study for Eagles Landing does not say that there needs to be a roundabout at Joseph area.
So in 2007, I'm not certain if the traffic signal would have cost $75,000 or not. But by today's standard of when we're approving the development, the verbal estimate from DOTD for a traffic signal would be the $150,000 to $200,000. If we wait potentially five more years, and I understand that they have, they've said their, their plans are to submit construction drawings for second and third filing, but, you know, something could change between this meeting and that time to where the third filing might not come for five, 10 years. A traffic signal at that point would, would cost more. There was no dollar amount that was ever put on this in 2007. It just said the funding or installation of a traffic signal is a part of the preliminary plat that was approved. As far as the right in, right out, or those kinds of improvements, when, when this was done, the traffic study talked about off-site improvements. Those sorts of improvements are, you know, constructing medians that control traffic, and that's within the development. And so to, to argue that, you know, some additional median modifications, you know, take away from off-site traffic improvements, I think is not exactly what the intent was to begin with. Our chief engineer, Ben Laurie, is here if, in case any, you know, any questions need to be directed towards him as far as what this funding today could mean towards improving the traffic of Ascension Parish through the ability to take this money and design the improvement that's, it's meant to be. This money doesn't pay for the roundabout. It merely pays for what was required in the 2007 preliminary plat approval, which is a traffic signal. We're not paying for the construction of a roundabout. We're just going to be able to use that money towards the improvement of that intersection through the design of what is the future use of that, that intersection, which is a roundabout.
Okay. So your recommendation then would be a payment of, it says 150 to 200, I mean, what would be the payment and to whom would it go?
DOTD is sending a letter that actually spells out what that figure, what that amount needs to be. This was a verbal estimate based on a meeting we had about this project. That, that amount of money would be paid to the parish, and then we would hold it towards improvements of that, that intersection, which currently, right now, we consider those improvements to best be spent towards the design of the roundabout, which is what the future use of that intersection would be.
Now, the traffic study stipulated that a roundabout would...
The roundabout is something that DOTD has, through their analysis of intersections and roadway improvements, that that intersection warrants a roundabout. Doesn't have anything to do with the developments' traffic study. Their traffic study still says it needs a traffic light, which is what it said back in 2007. However, the new study from 2012 stipulated that it was best installed during the third filing. That was not the traffic study that was used to approve this preliminary plat in 2007. And this preliminary plat hasn't come before this commission since that 2007 approval.
Mr. Chairman? Yes?
I'd like to speak. My name's Mark Kessler with Ford and Devote. With some of the concerns that they brought out today, contacted Allison, Calerella, our traffic impact analysis person. The first filing, in accordance to her, we did some rough calculations to make sure would not have an effect nor would a traffic signal be required. So with that being said, we've said, okay, well, let's, let's see if we can negotiate at the second and third filing whether, you know, the money goes to a traffic signal, whether it goes to a roundabout, once all the studies are complete. So that's why we were asking to postpone the number four item to the second and third filing.
Question? Mr. Chivisi?
Yeah. A couple of comments. A roundabout ultimately is safer and less expensive for long-term maintenance, so I like the idea of a roundabout there. It's not clear to me, unless someone can clear this up for me, that a traffic, that a signal light or any kind of control was required at the first filing. It's not clear right now. Can you, can you comment on that?
The original traffic study that was in 2007 stipulated that a traffic signal would be required in conjunction with the development. It did not spell out first filing, second filing, third filing.
I think it would be reasonable to, to require this money for a round, the study for a roundabout, or the design of a roundabout be, be put in with the second filing, and that, and that be contingent upon, upon that. Let, let the developer get some cash flow in the development. If he doesn't, if the development's unsuccessful, it's not going to need signal or roundabout there. If he gets some development going there, and it works out well, and he's ready to do a second filing, that would be the time, you know...
If it's unsuccessful, we would never get the money to build a traffic signal or a roundabout at that point.
If what?
If it's unsuccessful, you would never get the money to do it.
And you wouldn't need one. That's the point. You wouldn't need a signal or a roundabout.
It's questionable whether or not it needs one right now.
Well, that's my, that was my initial question. It's not clear to me, based on this, this argument between the two of you, that a signal light or a roundabout is required for the first filing. That's not clear.
I guess what I was referring to is it's questionable whether or not that intersection needs improvements, regardless of whether this development's going to be there or not. I mean, traffic improvements are necessary all over the parish.
Sure.
We hear that every single month. We have a meeting, someone is talking about traffic issues across the parish. However, during the preliminary approval, the previous commission saw fit that that traffic signal should be funded with the first filing. I mean, it was spelled out that it was with the development. It was not defined in the second filing, or the third filing, or any of that. The new traffic study in 2012, which like I said, I will add, no one from the parish ever saw that study. It was never submitted until two days ago. It did spell it out in the third filing. I'm not, you know, disputing the validity of one traffic study or another. I'm just stating that what was approved, when the preliminary plat was approved, which has not come before the commission again since that time, stipulated that the traffic signal should be installed with the first filing, not in second, third, or whatever.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, in addition to this traffic light issue, the recommendation is based on satisfactory completion of the engineering department's comments. Y'all have any further comments, Tim, on any of that?
The, one, the punch list item that he pointed out, and also there, there is another, something on the, on the roadway, on the drive to the treatment plant. And then we have testing reports that are outstanding, but I don't think that's really an issue. I think we can get them straightened out.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
We've approved final plats contingent upon completion of several items before, but the idea there was that they would be fairly quickly done, and we wouldn't make the developer wait until another month went by. Is that the case here? Will these, these other requirements be satisfied in the next week or two, without exception?
The turn lane will be completed next week, depending on weather and being able to lay asphalt on the turn lane. The, we're waiting on energy to run underground electricity to the two wet wells and the treatment plant. The treatment plant has already been installed. By the way, all the energies electrically in the subdivision is complete, except those three underground services to those three items. They should do it in the next week. You know, I don't work for energy. I can't guarantee that it will be done, but as soon as it will get done, we will do the fence, and there's some landscaping requirements that need to go around the treatment plant also, and that will be done as soon as the fence gets put up. I would say it should be done within the next two to three weeks.
Okay. Mr. Burgess?
When you say you want to negotiate in the second and third filing, are you trying to negotiate the cost down, or are you saying that you're negotiating something else?
Well, they, they saying 150, 200,000. We have, and I can show you our original budget back when we budgeted the turn signal. It was budgeted at 75,000, an original budget for Eagles Landing Development when it was, when it was first budgeted. I can get you a copy of that original budget, but of course, you know, as you, as you all know, the subdivision went up Sheriff's sale back in '09, and D.O. Horton bought it and put the whole thing together, and the subdivision was built according to the original preliminary plat.
Right. But so far tonight, you've chosen everything that's in your favor, whether it's new or old.
We have, you know, we don't object to funding the traffic signal or whatever, but what we objecting to is, is being stuck with 150 or 200,000 dollar bill when our original budget was 75,000.
No, but we're talking about the cost of a traffic light today. Otherwise, you'd tell me that the cost of materials that you're going to charge for these houses, you're going to charge the prices from 2007 or '05.
It's actually cheaper right now if you want to...
Or maybe a traffic light, so...
And we don't necessarily object at 150, but I mean, you know, is it 150 or is it 200? What is it going to be?
I'm trying to get an answer that you're going to fund the cost, the equivalent cost of a traffic light, whatever it is. Y'all can argue about what's correct, but somebody's got to fund a traffic light.
We will fund whatever the equivalent cost of a traffic signal is at the time that we negotiate the third filing construction plans with, and we will...
Our second, depending on what the motion is. Okay, thank you.
Had the transportation tax passed in Ascension, there would have been a number of, a number of traffic circles, or a number of roundabouts, rather, on, on Highway 42. That didn't pass, but they would have been funded by DOTD, like this one is proposed to be funded. The construction of the traffic circle will be a DOTD cost, however they get the money. So what we're talking about here is, is the cost of the design of that traffic circle. I don't know, I don't remember if at that intersection on the original traffic, the original transportation plan, if that intersection was planned for a roundabout?
During the lanes for change? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, for change.
Ben?
Not a roundabout.
I don't remember.
It was, it was planned for improvement. It wasn't specified, it was intersection.
Okay.
It wasn't necessarily a roundabout or traffic light, it was just intersection improvements, which might have been a roundabout.
Improvements was listed, not, not roundabout. The roundabout is from DOTD's studies of, of the roadway network.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Can we continue on that? There's a public hearing, I guess, on this. Can y'all maybe continue with that, and we'll be here to answer any further questions?
Yeah, and that would, I will open a public hearing at this point. Do we have any cards on this one, Stacy? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. I think this has been discussed enough. We'll entertain a motion at this time. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
I don't know if I can get the motion right. I need guidance from the staff. I would move for acceptance of this preliminary plat with the staff...
Final plat.
Final plat, excuse me, with the recommendations for the staff and that the equivalent cost for a DOT...
Traffic signal.
Traffic signal. I don't want this from Walmart, but, you know, a DOT-required traffic signal. The funding for that would be provided before the second filing is filed for, I guess.
Okay.
And I would second that motion.
Okay. So do we have that motion? Okay, good. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. At this time, we'll ask Mr. Ori to return to the meeting. And note that he has returned, please. Our next item is a public hearing to approve or deny the following final subdivision plat, The Shadows at Manchak, Phase One, McLennan Associates.
My name is Ross Berthelot. I'm the managing member for The Shadows at Manchak Development LLC, and we're here tonight requesting approval of our final plat. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay. Let's see that the staff has recommended approval. You've received the final plat. Punch list is where? How are we on that?
So as of today, the first comment was to revise drawing to include, or to address some comments in, as far as reference numbers on, or instrument numbers on reference maps, and to add information regarding the walking trail, areas for open play, including a couple of soccer goals, and an area for a tot lot, a play structure area. These items were added due to the fact that when this development was given preliminary approval, there was an area called out and specified for open play. Due to the fact of the drainage calculations changed, the pond size had to be modified, and it more or less absorbed that entire area that was dedicated for that in the preliminary plat. Through negotiations with Mr. Berthelot, we came to an agreement that there was enough leftover space, however not as large as the original size, that could still be programmed with elements that would meet those, the intent from the preliminary plat. The walking trail connects those two areas, and it's behind lots three through, looks like 27. I attached a graphic in the comments that more or less spells that out. I guess where I'm going with all this is, the engineer corrected all of those comments after the packets went out, so all of those comments have been addressed. Those are non-issues at this point. The punch list items, one of our inspectors went out to the site today, re-inspected, and all punch list items have been met at this time. However, this one, just like the previous one, needs a little bit more discussion. I had Stacy pass out an addendum to the comments, and I'd like to run through those for just a moment, so that you kind of understand what has taken place since the packets went out, to explain some things in regard to the roadway. So on the 21st of May, the developer's testing lab submitted the asphalt mix to the parish. However, the mix spec, or the mix did not meet the parish spec. On the 28th of May, the developer, in sometime between the 21st and the 28th, the roads were actually paved with that asphalt mix. On the 28th of May, the developer's testing lab submitted reports on the asphalt cores, and the cores did not meet thickness and density, which more or less, the road failed is the best way to describe it. On the 4th of June, we completed a final inspection of the development, and then on the 9th of June, due to the fact that the reports were received and read through, and we realized that the road testing failed, the parish contacted Gulf South Engineering and Testing, who is one of the testing labs that the parish has on retainer for doing quality assurance work. And we contacted that testing lab to go out and perform additional core, asphalt cores on the roadway to verify what we received in the testing lab from the developer's testing lab. And at that same time, I contacted the developer to let them know of the situation and the potential ramifications of what that meant for tonight's meeting. On the 10th of June, the developer, in trying to figure out what was going on, contacted his testing lab, and the testing lab reviewed their report, found errors in their report, and submitted a revised report showing that all the cores met the required thickness and density. However, we had already contacted Gulf South to perform the cores due to the original report. On the 11th of June, Gulf South went to the site, pulled the new cores, and took them back to their lab for testing. Also on the same day, the parish engineering department approved the mix based upon the mix meeting the minimum DOTD standards, and basically took the stance that we're willing to see how that mix performs over the maintenance bond period of time, and then if it has problems during that period of time, we'll address those at the end of the maintenance bond period. So that clears up the asphalt mix scenario. However, Gulf South will not have their density testing performed on the cores that the parish had pulled on the road until this Friday. So if you read at the bottom, based on all of that timeline, Gulf South preliminarily has indicated that it looks like the cores are going to be fine, but, you know, we don't have the testing reports back. So I would suggest, if you feel the development, you know, can be approved on all other accounts or all other issues, that to recommend that you approve conditionally upon the receipt of satisfactory report from Gulf South indicating that the road meets all standards of construction.
So the testing, they disapproved it, then they said, oh, we made an error, we approve it. What sort of error did they make? Did they explain that?
I'm not a geotech, so maybe Mr. Berthelot can explain. It completely failed, and now it completely passes, so...
Yeah, that's confusing.
It is. Imagine my dismay when I realized that it failed. So I went and spoke with PSI. They had all five cores that they pulled, this four-inch-wide core, and they have to be at least, five or six cores have to be an average of three inches deep. This is the asphalt section. And they had them all in front of them, and what he explained was, on the depth part, we brought the cores to them, my contractor did, pulled the cores, brought them, measured them in the field, gave it to their technician. The technician slices them off and makes them, I guess, smooth at the bottom so they can test density, okay? Density's one part of it, thickness is the other part of it. The density, five out of six of them were fine, one of them was low and abnormal, threw off the average. So there's a question about that that my testing company did not question. They just wrote on the report and sent it in. On the thickness side, because they sliced the cores, the average was 2.9 inches instead of three inches. They realized they made that mistake, but they didn't have the original measurements because we brought them the cores, and normally they would have taken their own cores in the field, and their guy knows to measure them before he gives them to the technician. So that's what happened there. It's really, it sounds worse than it is. But that said, with the specific density, the one that was low was numbered, numbered five or six. He went and remeasured it, and it's fine. He said sometimes the weights on these balances, on these weighing apparatuses, apparati, get stuck and whatnot, but he measured them again, it was fine. So he, I'm going back and forth with Michael, and two days ago, we finally got it corrected. The report was sent and accepted by the parish. But in the meantime, he's already called the parish's testing company, Gulf South.
So we'll get a second test on the same...
So more or less, we have a second opinion on whether or not the road meets requirements.
Gotcha. Okay.
And if they don't, then, you know, we got to, I got to go back to the drawing board, but we're asking for additional...
So if it fails, then what happens, I mean, in other words, if we pass this contingent upon that and it fails, then it's not approved?
If it fails, two things happen. If it fails and the developer chooses to proceed with the final plat as it's written and all the dedications, then the road would need to be milled and repoured. If he chooses to change the dedications, however, he could opt to create a private development with private roads, and then the road scenario is no longer an issue. We feel currently that things are going to be fine. Otherwise, we would have recommended the developer pull this item until next month because of everything that kind of happened last minute. However, Gulf South has indicated that it appears as though everything should be fine, and so that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. Any other question? Barring objection from commissioners, we'll open a public hearing at this time. Stacy, do we have any?
Yes, Catherine Gopple.
Okay. State your name, please.
I'm Catherine Gopple. Good evening, commissioners.
Hi.
I read about Shadows at Manchak in the Weekly Citizen recently in public notices. LDEQ is revoking a permit for Ascension Wastewater Treatment, Inc., the largest company of its kind in Ascension, and reissuing a new permit because the facility is adding an additional outfall to accommodate a second subdivision, Shadows at Manchak. That will be connecting to the current outfall at Meadow Ridge subdivision. The principal discharge from this source is made into the bayou Manchak. LDEQ has determined that the discharge will have no adverse impact on the existing uses of the receiving water body. Why should this disturb Ascension Parish residents? This company is currently under a consent decree, order from the LDEQ to come into compliance. Subdivisions that discharge into the bayou Manchak continue to be approved by the Planning Commission. The Department of Environmental Quality continues to issue permits for these wastewater treatment facilities while at the same time, they are telling the parish government to stop discharging into the bayous and waterways. Where's the accountability? Everyone complains about wastewater in the ditches. Officials both elected and appointed are only offering pleas to the people for more taxes to support a government-operated wastewater system. Will more money improve our situation if behavior continues to be irresponsible? Who will be responsible to stop the pollutants that are being discharged from wastewater treatment plants into the bayous and waterways? Your staff recommends approval based on three things: plats, punch lists, and engineering department concerns, but nothing is mentioned about the pollution in our waterways. It's time for some open discussion on how we can improve our permitting process and address these concerns. I'd like to enter my comments and the public notice into the public record. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Gopple. Do we have any other cards?
No.
Okay. At this point, then, I will close the public hearing. Any other comments from commissioners?
Just a comment. Ms. Gopple makes a great point. It's not the effluent that goes into Bayou Manchak, it's whether or not the effluent meets EPA and DEQ requirements. And Ascension Parish does have, in general, a problem with that, and I think eventually we're going to have to address that. I hope Ms. Gopple and everyone else here ultimately supports wastewater improvements in the parish, because we're going to need some serious and expensive wastewater improvements here. And ultimately, I think, my opinion is that the discharge will prob-- of the effluent, wastewater effluent would be into the Mississippi River. Because I think we should be sensitive about discharging effluent into our waterways. However, if the wastewater plant, we have to live with the situation for now, if the wastewater plant has satisfactory effluent for its plant, for that plant, then there's no reason for us to object to it at this time, but I think we all need to be sensitive to the fact that we need to get out of this situation and ultimately build wastewater treatment plants for the parish and discharge into the river. And that would also be, obviously, a very monitored discharge, and it would have to be acceptable effluent. As the package plants in the parish get older, we're going to continue to have more and more problems with this. So I appreciate Ms. Gopple's comments on that. I think I'm going to, with respect to this issue, I'm going to recommend approval conditionally upon satisfactory reports from the Gulf South on the new asphalt cores.
I'll second the motion. Okay. Any other discussion, any other questions? It's been moved and seconded. Any objection to the motion? The motion carries. Thank you. Next item is a public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council. Amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code. And the amendment is ordinance SR-13-07, an amendment to the subdivision regulations in the Unified Land Development Code pertaining to testing for compliance of specifications. Is this Michael, or Tim?
Yeah, this is basically the sanitary sewer, or actually, it's a storm sewer also, but it's mainly concerned with the sanitary sewer being very deep. And DOT requires that each lift be compacted. It's also in the Baton Rouge standards to have them tested, every lift, which are 12-inch lifts. And we've only been requiring, though we've always required them to be following the DOT standards, we've only been requiring them to submit the testing reports for the mid and the top lifts. And this amendment requests them to submit on every lift, to show where the testing is meeting on each lift of their sewer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of commissioners? This also requires a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Do we have cards on this, Miss Stacy? Okay. So I will close the public hearing. Any other comments or motion?
I think it's a very good change, and I recommend approval to the parish council for the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recommend approval of this ordinance to the parish council. Any objections? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is staff report. Okay, we'll go then to item 13, engineering staff report. You have a chart for us here, I see?
Well, the first thing, we want to ask for a public hearing next month for a code revision to the grade requirements, and that's...
To the what requirements?
To the grade requirements of the roadways and parking lots. And basically, what this is, there is something within our code that says that the parking lot should be no more than one foot below base flood elevation, and we don't really know how that got into the code, and this is really a private matter, if these are private parking lots. What kind of, you know, what kind of elevation they want to put those at is really up to them, and it's not a FEMA requirement either, and so we just think that should be taken out of the code.
So there would be no requirement at all for parking lot as far as elevation?
For parking lot elevation. They'll still have to meet the mitigation requirements if it's, if they're building with the, you know, filling in the floodplain with their parking lot, but the elevation would not be regulated.
Okay. So you're asking for a public hearing at our next meeting to recommend that...
Recommend removing that from our ordinance.
To the council?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to put that on next month's agenda. Mr. Burgess moves.
Second.
Mr. Bishop seconds. Any objection?
No.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda next month for public hearing. And then you've got the permit summary there for us?
Actually, I think, I guess Vern does, but first of all, I'd just like to talk about some of the projects we have going on. There are four projects that are in their bond period now. We have four projects which are under construction. Actually, two of those were what came up. We still consider them as constructing the infrastructure, but depending on, they're almost done. So there'll be two more that are under construction. We have five developments in the... We have five developments in the construction review stage, and then, actually, no, there's four in construction review. There are five that have been approved, but they haven't gone to construction yet. They're waiting for other development before they go into their construction. So that's a total of 1,100 lots when all is done, that'll be finalized and brought into our system. And then on the commercial projects, we have 16 that are under review, and 56, we've kind of, we've given them the go-ahead, and they can start construction, or they're under construction at this time. And then Laverne, I think, wants to talk.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to the.
Yes. I think Laverne wants to talk. Let's have him.
Laverne?
I've been, we've been asked to give you, the commission, a summary report of the amount of billing permits purchased.
Oh, good.
Obtained in the last several years, up to date, and I've given, distributed them out to each one of you, and as you reviewed this, and you can see that they were compiled all the way back up to 2006, when at that time, there were 1,706 permits issued for new residential construction, and as of last year, there's 817, and in between, there's a number that varies from in the 800s down to the 500s. Last year was 817, which we already had this year, 360, but this month, it's a middle, which is going to surpass it, 64, which was last June. So we had a pace again of comparing to last year's permitting for new residential homes. And the second sheet would give you the information of the commercial work that's going on. We had 52 commercial projects that went on, it's based from everything from warehouses to new business, restaurants, office building, churches, structures, other than those types of building, hospitals, that we didn't have any, but strip malls and medical centers. So it's a combination of all of the commercial work that's being under construction or already completed for this year, of June of this year, for 2013, and a summary for the past previous years down to 2006. So it's just something that you guys had requested from us to do, and if you've got any questions after, you know, further review of this tonight, you can always give us a call, or you can ask questions now.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Sure.
Any questions, comments? All right, I will, that brings us to the end of our agenda for the first meeting. As I explained at the beginning, we will actually have three separate meetings tonight. This will end our planning commission meeting, and we'll take a short recess between them. We'll start the zoning, or actually, the joint meeting between then, and then we'll have the final meeting after that. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Okay, any objection? Okay, so this meeting is adjourned. We will start the next meeting in five minutes.